We need to get started here. Let me grab this. I'd like to call this meeting of the Fremont. We will. Call this meeting the Fremont County Planning Commission to order. It is October 3rd, 2023, a little bit after 3:00 PM here. And may we, so with, I will call the role, and so Mark Mazur, the chairman, is not present. Gardner Fay is not present. Rude Mergelman is present. Larry Brown is present. Dale McCullough is present, and I am present. And with that, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now we move to approving the agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as written for October 3rd, 2023.
I'll second. Thank you, Larry and Dale. Any discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any comments on the minutes? We need an approval of the minutes. I do have one comment. You probably need to add me to the attendee list. Either that or make it when I, when you have, when you quote me later on in the document to say the ghost of John Hammrich did. Any other comments on the, on the minutes?
Looked pretty decent to me.
Okay, ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minute says corrected.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any comments?
Rude?
No.
I'm good.
Okay, then let's vote.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Thank you. I don't think we have any unfinished business. We do expect the applicant to be here for number one. Is that correct? The zone change?
So. Hello, everyone. So George Hall had something come up that he is unable to attend, but we have the property owner, Keith Berry, here in the audience, who will present his project. So what we have here at my property from 1422 Walnut, it was historically done and zoned as low density residential, and we're working to change it to ag suburban. So we've gone through the process of changing it, filled out the application, went through the process, got everything submitted, and looking to become ag suburban. Don't know what else you might need from me.
Okay. And do we have a staff report on this one?
We do. So, all right. So the purpose of this rezone is to change the zone district from low-density residential to agricultural suburban. The applicant believes his property was improperly zoned as livestock being raised on the, as livestock was being raised on the property when zoning was established. Livestock is not allowed in low-density residential, which is an indicator that potentially there was an error. Additionally, the applicant has a separate application submitted with the planning and zoning office for a boundary line adjustment. The applicant's lot located at 1422 Walnut Street is currently 1.02 acres in the low-density residential zone district. The additional acreage which the applicant wishes to add is located in the agricultural suburban zone district. The percentage of land in the agricultural suburban district is in surplus of the 25% of the applicant's current LDR-zoned lot, which makes a formal zone change application a requirement per Fremont County zoning resolution, section 2.4.3. So the, the purpose of this, it's still going to stay single-family residential use at this time. Number of access points are not changing. The, the homes there currently have full service from all utilities. We have received no public comments or concerns. This was sent out to all the various agencies as we do typically, and we have received no negative feedback. No waivers are being requested. So in light of all this, having found the application is in compliance with the requirements of the Fremont County zoning resolution, staff recommends approval of the zone change one from low-density residential to agricultural suburban with no conditions or contingencies.
Thank you for that. Any comments or concerns from the commissioners?
To me, it was pretty much straightforward.
Pretty straightforward, zoned in error at the time of original zoning and correcting, correcting an error as well as correcting some boundaries. That sounds all, all good. Okay. Any other comments? Then I'm open to a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve zone change number one for Berry 23-002 as submitted and.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Rude. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Then we'll vote. Dale?
Aye.
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 You gotta give me a chance to vote, Rudy. Okay, we got four ayes up here. Congratulations, Keith.
Thank you. I have some of the things that, you know, I've talked to Dan about a little bit. So after going through this whole process and doing the whole zoning change and going through and filling out the application, there was just a couple of things on it where I thought, which I've talked to Dan about a little bit about, a little bit of concerns from a, you know, public standpoint. I wanted to go through the whole process that was set forth. That's always already set in regulation. But I want to bring up and just discuss with Dan and maybe bring some more stuff to Dan in the future about going from low-density residential to ag suburban, you know, lowering the density of it. With the process and the, the zone change that we went through, felt it like it was very, very rigorous and as if I was trying to put in a business or something of that nature rather than lowering the density to become ag suburban. I don't know if there's different requirements. I don't know what other places do, but it was just something that I came across as a citizen with going through this. Maybe there might be some other options out there, which I don't know. So I wanted to, you know, kind of just mention that and bring it forth to you guys because it just seemed like there's a lot. And there's a lot of stuff that should go into it if you are going to be increasing your density and going for that stuff too. So, and I understand why, why things are the way they are, but I think, feel like there might be an easier application process to do if you're lowering it simply, if that makes sense.
Sure, sure. And, and we appreciate comments like that, especially right now because we are in the middle of changing the regulations. And so if you have specific comments, they'll be, I'm sure they'll be welcome and, and beneficial. So, you know, if you wanna, if you want to, I guess the, the point person on this should be Dan. Talk to him. Let him know what you've seen and what, where, you know, if there's, if there's ways to simplify the form while still, you know, achieving the purposes of the, of the regulations, that would be great. That's the, and from, from my perspective, having been a regulated entity for many years, regulations that are, that are simple, straightforward, and if you follow the process, you're guaranteed an outcome, are always highly desirable regulations. So yeah, Keith would really appreciate if you, if you would share that.
Right. And like, the reason I was bringing this up is I don't want to be part of a problem. You know, I just want to help. I want to be part of the solution on trying to help streamline so that way other people don't have the same experience that I had on some hurdles that I had to jump through. So, but ultimately, it was, it was good, and I'm, I'm super excited about changing over and moving forward the property and now onto the boundary law adjustment, I guess.
Yes, sir. And throughout this process, Keith and I have had a lot of discussions. And as we're looking to redo and make changes to the zoning resolution, this is clearly something that's fresh in our minds as we're evaluating what we have and what changes we can make. So.
Great.
It's just unfortunate.
As was pointed out, it was fantastic timing on your part. It's not us.
Really?
Yeah. I mean, I've been wanting to do something with that. And, I mean, my house is 130 years old. It was one of the original farmhouses on that block. But why it was zoned LDR, I, I don't know.
More than likely, it was a mistake.
Right. Well, and that's, and that's kind of the other downside of, you know, as being a citizen and not living there in the eighties. But I knew the people that grew up in the house. So they told me that they raised animals all the way through until they sold it in the mid, mid nineties when they sold it. They had cows, they raised cows, they had pigs, chickens, they had everything. But all of that's not allowed in low-density residential. So had to have been a mistake, but it still cost me, you know, to go through this whole process, which wasn't cheap. So, and that's kind of a, that's why I'm wondering if there's like an easier way, an easier process for something to be corrected instead of having to jump through all the hurdles that I went through. Because after you hire a surveyor to do all the work on surveyor, pay an engineer to sign off saying that you don't need to do a roadway study. I mean, there's just a lot of things that piled on on top of it, all for something that I felt like was a mistake in the beginning, costing me, you know, $5,000. So I, I don't know what the answer is yet, but I want to look into it.
How long, how long have you owned the property?
12 years now.
And it was owned quite a while before that.
Mm-hmm. LDR, yep.
Yeah. It's, it's unfortunate that you didn't catch that when you were buying the property.
Right, yeah. I mean, it was a good deal, and I liked the house, and, you know, it's, it's home, but to know that I can't have chickens on the piece of property. But if I lived in the city of Canadian City, I could have chickens. So, and it's just weird. But I'm happy about it. Ag suburban is where I think it should be and moving forward with it.
And I queried, I queried staff about, about your other lot line adjustment too because I thought it would be kind of unfair for you to have to come in again and do, and go through the whole process twice just to do that when it could have been done all at once, if it needed to be, but they assure me that that won't be necessary now. So.
Yeah. And so like I said, I'm not, I don't want to be a, a problem. I want to be part of the solution and moving forward with the process that we, that has been set in place and, you know, with regulations and such too. So, but of course, I'm, you know, I'm always trying to streamline workflows and some things I'm just like, hmm, how could this be better? I don't know.
Well, I think, I think if you have some valuable input, let us hear about it because that's really what we're here for too, is to represent you.
Yeah, yep. So I think it's good. I mean, everything is good. I think moving forward in the future, I think what, what Dan's been doing and with the zoning regulations and zoning changes and stuff, updating it and making it more of a streamlined process is going to be good. With technology as a benefactor can streamline a bunch of things too. So we'll see. And like I said, I'll work with Dan in the future with going through some of this stuff. I told him I'm only a phone call away, so if he has questions on things, I'll give my input of what it is. I mean, he can take it for what it is. I mean, it's just me, so. But yeah, I just want to thank you guys for your time.
Sure, thank you. Thanks for coming in. On, on this, perhaps something to think about, excuse me, is if someone is coming in for a zone change due to an error, the, their, in that particular circumstance, you might consider a simpler form and a waiver of fees if there's an error, if there was an error made in the original zoning. Because that, that, it is correct that if, if there was a mistake made, you know, it's not to point fingers or anything, but then we have kind of an innocent party that's trying to, you know, fix things, so.
Absolutely, yeah. Unfortunately for Keith, this is when this kind of popped up. It's provided for a lot of discussion and trying to figure out how we could address this moving forward.
Great.
It, it doesn't necessarily help him, but it's, we, it might make significant change within our regulations to, to better things.
Great. Okay. Moving on, we're talking now about Fremont County road naming and site address regulations.
Hello, everyone. So we, I believe it's Code Enforcement Department. They were contacted, were we originally contacted by GIS or the sheriffs? Do you, do you recall, Keith? Was it GIS? Was it your guys?
It goes all, so motivating stuff.
Yeah, apologize. As long as I have additional staff in the room, I'm going to utilize it if you guys don't mind.
So I'm the, the director of the Fremont County Regional GIS Authority upstairs. So we've been working on, we goes way back to when I first started here in 2007 about cleaning up address ranges or address points throughout the county, finding the anomalies that don't make sense when you have, one of the ones that always sticks out in my head is Copper Gilt Road. You have addresses that are to Copper Gilt Road, and then you have addresses that are to the county road of said segment, which could be County Road 3, County Road 28, 7A, 29, County Road F30, all the way through there, which is all Copper Gilt Road. But trying to simplify it where all of them are the same, and that way your address database can be this accurate and follow suit. So addresses can geo-reference into a map. Sorry, that's a mouthful. But we identified a bunch of stuff back here in 2007, and the planning and zoning office and Code Enforcement guys have worked to correct and update addresses as well as some street names to make sense. That way the street name matches up with the addresses corresponding, if that makes sense.
Yep. So what kind of happened is there's going to be a GIS update to Freecom for dispatching purposes. And that rollout, I believe, is happening in April. If things go well.
Yes.
So in, in about April, there's going to be a new dispatching system based off of, in conjunction with the GIS mapping system. Well, there are numerous areas within the county that are unnamed. Roadways that are just, they'll, County Road 12 is a perfect example. There'll be a stack of mailboxes up. You'll see one driveway go in, and you'll have three, four, five miles easily of roadways servicing 15, 20, 25 houses, multiple intersections, and they all have a County Road 12 address. Right now, our regulations don't have a way to assign names to what are roadways to make things more identifiable and safer for not only the, the citizens that live on those roadways, but the first responders trying to get there. I had a, a conversation with Michael Kroll from Emergency Management, and there was a fire that he was working, and they were trying to call in its location, but they couldn't because it didn't have a roadway name. It had a house there. It, it was a fully functioning operational home. Not really sure how all that worked out, but, because it takes an address to get permitting to do all that stuff. But the fire department was trying to respond to a fire, and they couldn't call out the location because the roadway was unnamed. But our regulations don't currently have the ability for us to assign road names or pathway to, pathway to include the people that live in that area to select their own road name and have a say in what road they may be at. So we got a, we got a, a roadway document from a different county. And in planning and zoning, we, we went through it extensively, made it work for our county, and then had it reviewed by the county attorney and former Fremont DOT Tony Aden. Everyone signed off on it that they feel that this would be positive. It, it assigns when a roadway would be considered a roadway or when it's a driveway. It allows the opportunity to where if, for some reason, there's multiple roads with the same name, we have the ability to rename the conflicting ones. So when somebody goes to elk something, whatever, they're going to the right location instead of 30 miles away. So it gives us the ability to clean up road names that are inconsistent, to assign road names to unnamed areas, and standards for street signage, addressing on homes. It, it really affords us the opportunity to clean up a lot of errors that we currently have.
Dan, let me ask a quick, quick question. A few years ago, well, it might have been five or 10 years ago now, if you moved into a certain area, what you would do is go to the post office, and then they would issue you an address, you know, for mail delivery and that sort of thing. Are they getting this information or are they sending, are they doing anything anymore with the post office or?
So, so Code Enforcement assigns all of the addresses within the county. When, what we, we use the GIS system. There's a, we have formulas. There's a mapping system. You could, when an applicant comes in to build, they'll, they'll drop off their permits. And then based off of a screen grab of GIS or a plat of their property, they'll mark where their address is going to be. And we can measure to where the exact number should be numerically for that lot, not based off of what their neighbors are addressed or. So we can identify exactly what they should be. Now, once we assign that address, we'll, Code Enforcement will drop a pin on that parcel with the appropriate information, which then goes into the GIS situation, system. Once we do that, it goes up to an all list. It goes out to Freecom, you know, the sheriffs, ambulants, fire. The entire county, whether or not it's within their area, will get that address issuance with all of the appropriate information to update them of the new, new address in that location. When we're doing that, if we notice that other properties are wildly out of range and too far off, we can go in right now and do a change of address for free. And we, we assign a new address. We'll contact the owner first to let them know what's going to be going on. And if there's a large string of improperly addressed, improperly numbered homes, we'll, we do notifications, and then we'll actually go in and do a change of address to everyone to get them all in line. But we have countless unnamed roadways and no way to define what is a road versus what is not a road from what's existing. It's really easy on the, on the front end when, if Keith was coming in and proposing a subdivision with a new road name. We double-check the road name, make sure it, it's its own name. There's nothing similar. It, it's super simple, but a lot of the, the older, the older roadways, driveways, easements, we don't have a way to correct that, and there, there's a substantial number of them. So that's what got us trying to get this document in shape.
So how are you going to handle parcels that have addresses assigned to them now, even though they're vacant parcels or they're farmland?
So most of the vacant parcels don't have an address number assigned to them. It's not until the time of construction that people would approach us to get an address in order to be eligible for construction. So when somebody comes in and does a division of land, say they record a plat with 35-acre parcels, they don't need a subdivision formally, they just go and record it. Right now, they could assign their own road names without any review, and it won't be until the individual owners of those lots want a building permit, would they come to the planning and zoning office for an address. So this just enables us to really clean up a lot of stuff on the back end, and it also enables us on those, those larger 35-acre plats that get recorded to at least review the road names prior to it being an official document so we could try and troubleshoot any names that conflict. So it, it, there's been a bunch of errors that we've bumped into and just haven't had a pathway to, to fix. So it's, hopefully this helps.
Yeah, well, the reason I'm asking is because I happen to own a 10-acre parcel that has an address assigned to it.
Okay, so.
So, so would, is that a valid address under this new ordinance?
So all of the current addresses would be, would be valid unless we found out that there was an error with them. And that's, so the issue that happens is a lot of people in the past, they may have just assigned their own address. So there may not be an address on file on the county's behalf or to the post office.
Well, it's on the deed.
But just because it's on the deed doesn't make it a valid address. Somebody just named it and put, could have placed the, whatever number they felt it would be on your deed, and it doesn't make it a valid address. So we have people that will submit for a building permit all the time, and then in the course of that, we'll find out that what they're claiming is their address is not valid. So then we'd actually go in and issue a, a correct address for that lot. So just because there's an address number on your deed does not mean it's correct.
So is there going to be a whole process that somebody would have to go through, even with this new ordinance, to get a, to get a valid address?
Yeah, so typically it's triggered at the time of construction and, on a, on a lot. So typically, at the time of construction, folks will come to us, and that's when we'll realize whether or not they need their address verified or if they need an address issued. So it's not the, right now, the county is going to focus on trying to get names on the unnamed roadways and fix the areas that are wildly out of, out of numeric order. And then as things progress, we'd be able to fix the other addresses. So it's not, we're not going to do an inventory of the entire county and turn everything upside down, but it will give us the ability to go in and name stuff that requires it. Because right now, we, we do have the ability, if something is improperly addressed, we do have the ability currently to do a change of address to make it correct. So we can do that right now, but that normally is triggered when somebody else comes in for an address and the rest of the street is out of range. And we notice that based off of one person coming in for an address, and then we have to notify the whole neighborhood that we got to make it, make a change. So this just gives us the ability to, to, to take care of the, all of the issues rather than the minor ones right now.
So a few years back, this was probably four, maybe five years ago now, Highway 115 was addressed, and it started from both sides. So it started from.
Both ends?
Yeah, it started from both ends, and it started again in Penrose. So you had, so Pathfinder Park, address should be, what, 6,000 something? It originally was addressed at like 19,000, even though it was right next to mile marker six. So, I mean, if you think about it, I mean, you, they should go in order. You should start at the beginning and go up. As your, as your mile markers increase, your address is going all the way through. So we had to go through and fix, I think there was probably 30 or.
There's probably, well, 50, 60.
Addresses that were just wrong. And then, there was a big undertaking in the county. The county commissioners were, everybody was involved with it. It was a, it was an isolated project to fix all the addresses for Highway 115. And to make them all in order.
There was first responders going to the wrong location within our county when help was needed on the other end. And that's what triggered that. So on the larger changes, step one is to notify the county commissioners that we found a major error and we need to address it. Because changing folks' address, an address for us is easy, right? It's, it's a little bit of time, and it's a document, and it's administrative. We, we don't charge for a change of address if there was an error. But for one of our, our citizens, that's a change of address on your, all of your IDs, all of your billing, which companies are going to recognize the new address? Because some companies, even though we're the addressing authority, will not recognize what we give as a new address because their GPS tells them it's not.
Well, see, that's my concern where I have an address that's placed on the deed of, of the property. That's, that's the legal document of ownership.
Yeah, and, and depending on what the address was placed on your deed versus when we actually go in and, and check your street and the range on your street.
Well, personally, I think, I think it's in the ballpark. I don't think, I don't see a problem with it, but I would, but I can see, I can see where there could be other issues pop up.
So when I came to this county, I was improperly addressed. But when they went to address my lot, they realized my entire street was improperly addressed. So they had to change my entire street because they realized everything was out of range. It was inconvenient. I'll, I'll be the first to admit it. It took a couple of years notifying Google of where my actual address was. It, it's not fun. We're not looking to, to change everyone's information and really upset the public. But, you know, former law enforcement, I want to make sure if a cruiser or an ambulance needs to come to my house, that they can find where I'm at. So it, it can be frustrating when you're on the other end of it, and I've experienced that firsthand. So what, what we'll do is we'll notify the county commissioners first that there was a major error and that we've discovered this because there's going to be backlash. Next, depending on the size of it, if it's a couple of homes versus one, the 115 project, which I was a part of, we'll send out notifications that, hey, there's, your property was improperly addressed. We're going to have to make a change. If there's a lot of folks, we'll send out that letter and let them know a timeframe. The 115 project, we actually waited till after the holidays so we wouldn't disrupt anyone's packages. We, we try to make whatever concessions we can.
So are we going to see each one of these address changes come through here?
No, that would be all in office administration.
Administrative?
Yeah, that, so. Yeah, that, so code enforcement handles all the addressing for the planning and zoning department. So it would all be in office.
The, the exception to that would be if there was an appeal.
Yes.
We would hear an appeal.
Yep, so in, in this, um, in these regulations, it does give an appeal process. And so that way, if somebody does appeal, that's when it would come before, uh, BOCC or planning commission. So that's when you'd be made aware of it. We, rather than us just going in and applying a name to an unnamed roadway, there's actually a pathway for reaching out to the people that live on that roadway with a couple of options and see what they vote for their road to be. We want folks to have a voice, but we also want them to be safe.
The, um, I've got a couple of comments and questions. Keith, who owns the master address guide? Who's the owner of that?
Um, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Uh, I believe right now Kenny, Randy Lesher is the custodian of the IMSA.
Okay.
Which, that's the master street guide, which in discussion with the E nine one one authority and whatnot, at some point in time in the future, it will go away. And the replacement will be the GIS system, which is what we're working on improving to get up to that one ninety-nine percent of accuracy. So that way, it's a digital, a digital master street guide.
Okay, so that, that lead, that kind of leads to my first comment. The, on page two, under D, road naming site addressing system requirements, number four.
Yes, sir.
Assignment or modification of address numbers. It says that, um, that Fremont County Planning and Zoning will communicate all changes pertaining to CRCA. It probably needs to be to the county GIS authority and not CRCA because it's, it's, it's you guys that, if I understand the process right, and, and correct me a bit because we're talking here, but, but doesn't that, doesn't that change have to come from you guys? I mean, let, so, so we've got the master street address guide that exists now and Randy is the owner of that. And so, uh, if we were doing it now, it should, the notification should go to Randy Lesher as part of the E nine one one system, who would then make adjustments to the guide and then that, that falls down to CRCA. And so when you guys are doing it, won't, won't the, won't the appropriate pathway to be through you to CRCA?
I would say the E nine one one authority.
E, E nine one one?
I think E nine one one would be, because the E nine one one is going to be the phone calls of the nine one one system. That's the main, that's the main focus. And the GIS authority is an entity member of the E nine one one authority.
Sure.
So we would be, we would be the, it could be the, E nine one one is the custodians as the, the, the overall. We would just be a custodian on behalf of the E nine one one authority.
Understand, understand. So, so, so really then, as, as a formal matter, the notification of a change should go to the E nine one one authority, who then turns the, turns the crank and.
Which right now, it would go to Randy Lesher and he would be adding that into the IMSA. I think, I think that going to the E nine one one authority and could, and then it could funnel down to the GIS authority, I think would be an appropriate path.
Okay, so, so that needs to, so it should not say CRCA, should say the E nine one one authority.
Yeah, because then the E nine one one authority could funnel it to the GIS authority and the CRCA via the GIS authority. Because we're, we're maintaining the data such.
Via the normal.
And that would be all on the E, the Fremont County side of things.
Yeah.
Even though dispatch, uh, the CRCA and et cetera, it would be both through the CRCA. But for Fremont County side of things, yes, I would say that would be the, the appropriate.
So in all, all of dispatch is included on the all list, um, so it's sheriff, um.
Oh, I see, so you have, you have a whole distribution.
We have a, a massive distribution list that covers, um, all the fire departments, um, nine one one, uh, assessor. We actually put the point on GIS, but GIS is included and if we make an error, they let us know.
We, we, yeah, so they, they have a, so the, the, the code enforcement guys have a, a GIS database that they put their issuance of addresses in. We see that, but we also create our own, which is the, the address point that we send off. They keep it for their records, that way they know when they're issuing it. But it, we modify our, uh, address point database.
So there's, there's, there's kind of two, there's two issues there. One is the formal change to make sure that the, that the change goes down through all the software and, uh, different programs that would, that, that are, will be in place for nine one one calls to be able to be directed to the right place. And the other is just kind of a heads up to, to the different agencies to say, hey, here's something. Because it may take a little while for it formally to come through and actually end up so that when a, when, when a dispatcher calls, enters an address, that it calls up the right, the right location. It may take a little while for that to happen.
So the, the moment we set a point, um, we complete all of our paperwork at that time and then a copy of that issuance gets attached and it goes out to our all list and goes out to every entity that could be aware. So every dispatcher gets it, emergency management gets it, fire gets it, um, assessor, like it, the world gets it. And we're constantly updating that list due to staff turnover and, and trying to make sure we're accurate. So it, it's not allowed to leave our office until, not only do we set a point, but it goes up to the all list and everyone's aware. But maybe I'd need to rename.
So, so the, so the, I've got, I've got a concern there because, because going out to the, for instance, going out to CRCA or going out to the different fire departments, uh, you know, that the, there's no, the, the, the dispatching agency is the one that actually dispatches. Okay, because the fire station doesn't take nine one one calls. They don't, they don't take calls for service for, hey, I've got a fire. It's the combined regional communications authority that does that. So it, it really needs to be, that although it's good to give everybody a heads up, I think that, I think that there's, it, it would be more appropriate that it's not released, that, that there's some communication between you and the E nine one one authority about when it's going to be implemented.
Okay.
Because, because, because otherwise, the problem, the problem is going to be is if you change the address and the dispatcher, you know, and it takes a week for that to come down to the software on the, on the dispatcher side, in that week, they could dispatch somebody to the wrong place. And so the point is, is that it needs to be, it needs to be, the change needs to go through the system before, before the trigger's pulled, right? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do, I do. I'm trying to think how we can, um, how we'd be able to accomplish that.
Yeah, that's, it's, I, I'm not sure I understand, you know, the master street guide, I've heard a lot of discussion about it. And I, I'm not sure I, you know, that I sound like I know what I'm talking about, you know? But, uh.
Yeah.
The, nonetheless, it's, it's a complicated situation. And, and the, and the, and truly, the, uh, the, the goal here is that when someone calls for help, that, that, that the help can get to where they are.
Yes, sir.
You know, that's, that's, that's the goal, as well as the county's interest in maintaining orderly addresses and that don't skip up, you know, that you don't have one in the five hundreds in the middle of the seven hundred block or something like that, you know?
So when they do send out the, uh, issuance of addresses, usually we have that address inputted into the GIS system, into the database, within twenty-four to forty-eight hours.
Yeah.
Usually we have it in there. The, the, the problem we, we were going to run into is when we're doing monthly parcel updates or something of the nature, which we could figure out what that could look like. And it could be, um, building parcels, it usually depends on where we're at, but it's usually quarterly we push out updates for parcels. Because building up, uh, building the parcels and updates and such is a, is a, a cumbersome, uh, process that we go through. But with, with being said, I, I mean, I, I see what you're saying. Pushing that out, that phone call is still going to be tagged to that old address. Until we get that address updated into the CAD system, it could still be there, but.
So, so the, on, on an individual basis, the, the likelihood of that is going to be low. The, you know, and there's no guarantee that a property owner or that a, a person had a telephone on a piece of property, they may think they know the address, well, the true owner of it knows it's just been changed or something like that. What you may, what you may consider there, and it, and it may be appropriate for it just to, for it to grind its way through the system. But if you're doing wholesale changes, I think there needs to be a lot of communication between planning and zoning and E nine one one and, and GIS. Make sure that, that everything happens at the appropriate time, if there's wholesale changes.
Right, when, when we did that one fifteen project, we did have everything put in place and we had a, a rollout of the updated GIS data to push out as well. And we, when we push out our data, we push it out to all the different entities, um, as well as the dispatch center as well. So everybody, everybody on the emergency side of things had all the updated data, but waiting for Google and FedEx uses Google and UPS uses Google and Google, trying to get Google to update something?
Took me two years. It's tough, I, I did it as a trial run to offer a step-by-step process for people. So we can give them a little, this is how you do it, two years for me. So, um, yeah, it wasn't ideal. And, and like Keith said, on the larger scale, like the one fifteen project, or if we're going to redo an entire roadway, we do coordinate with others on that. It's, it's the ones or twos that, the smaller stuff that. And, and I've been, as you guys have been talking, I've been trying to think of how, how that would look, how we can get it out before we send it out and make sure we, we coordinate. So, um, that's something I definitely look into.
So it, it, it's worth considering because it, we can have real situations where people need help. And if, if an address has been changed, but not throughout the whole system, they, we could have first responders going to the wrong place.
Yeah, we're, we're not, we're looking to get rid of the delays, not cause them. So, um, I'll, I'll do some research and see what I can come up with.
Okay, uh, I've, I've got a, I've got another, another question. And that, so if you have a commercial property with multiple buildings that's accessed by one road, is it, is it, is it the, the county's intention to assign separate addresses to all the buildings? So if it's a commercial, um, you know, a property and there's a business going on that, say, just operates during daylight hours, you know, normal light hour, business schedule type schedule, that, what, what's the county's intention there is, would that be to assign separate addresses to each building?
We, we've always viewed it as a parcel gets one address. And then it, um, we had, uh, an issue with the mobile home park a few years ago, where the people came in and they wanted an address for every one of their mobiles on one lot. And, um, the way we had done it is there was one address for the parcel and then there's, we start the alphabet. So I would kind of look as if there's a commercial venture, maybe it'd be, you know, one, two, three, whatever way. And then you'd have an A building, a B building, and maybe we could number out the bays or we could do something along those lines. But we want to try and keep it to where there's one address per individual parcel. And then we could break it down, um, how we see fit.
So, so based on that, I, I would suggest a change to the definition of addressable structures or units. What it says right now is generally the habitable or occupied structures, uh, could be plural on a lot, but also may include other things. And, and so rather than say it's generally the structure or unit, say it's generally it's the lot, except that individual buildings may be, you know, so the general case is it's per lot, but with the provision that specifics may change that, that it may be individual structures. Because that's, that, if I understand, that's the idea. Generally, we start from there, but then based on the specifics can break it down to.
Yeah, so, yeah, in the GIS world, in our office, um, the way we, the way we handle that, that scenario is for a, a mobile home park or such, there's the one site address. The site is the property, the parcel itself is fourteen thirty Walnut Street. And then inside of that, you have secondary addresses, so that's the primary address for the site. And then you have secondary addresses, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, all the way around through there. So that way, they're all individually located and they're all geolocated on the imagery. So A point is on top of the A trailer, et cetera. So that way, we know. And then, uh, that information gets relayed back into the E nine one one system to pinpoint exactly which, which building they're looking for. So, uh, we look at it as a primary and a secondary address point, but it's all in the same database. So, but yes, and that's the way we look at it is a site address, is the definition we use. So that could be something that you put in there.
Okay. Let's see, I think that, did I have one other comment for you on this? I guess, I guess that was, that was pretty much it. Any, any other comments from commissioners? So the action on this.
So the, the request I was going for is, this is going to be, um, a new section in the subdivision regulations. So this isn't part of the FCZR with the hopeful adoption, finalized adoption date of April. So the, the hope with this is that we would be adding a new section to the end of the subdivision regulations. So we can get this put in place in time to start making some changes prior to the GIS rollout, um, in the spring.
Okay.
So, uh, we're, we're hoping for, moving towards an immediate adoption, as soon as possible.
So, so do we, would that be the action that we could take today as adoption? Or what, what is the action for today?
I, I think it would be appropriate if you guys made a, a recommendation, if you, I'm wondering, do, do you want me to modify the definitions and do some research? So with those, it's maybe like, I don't know if that would be a contingency of, that it could move forward or would you want that re-presented, what I find? How would you like me to provide that information?
So, so the process here is, is that these, these are the, the zoning regulations that fall under our purview. Okay, and so the, when there's a change to zoning regulations, we, we, um, you present the proposed change, we are supposed to vote on it, to send it to the county commissioners for final action. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. I haven't had it in front of me yet where there's, um, been additional minor changes potentially. So I, I'm trying to think through the process of how to, how this would work.
So the, the, if, if we need, you know, and this is probably a question for the attorney, do we, do we need a formal motion and adoption of the new, um, section twenty-four? And, and, and whatever, whatever the process should be, that's fine. You know, it's just, it seems like we're a little unsure right now what, what we should do. Right, that's, what we've done in city council sometimes in cases like this is say, well, it's a thumbs up, go ahead and start turning the crank. But, but the, it is, this is, for formal adoption, that will happen in April. And so we're not doing a formal adoption, we're just kind of giving a smile and a nod right now, as I understand it.
I, I believe, um, what I'm requesting is the, uh, a recommendation to, uh, present this.
Include this in the, in the, in the zoning changes that will be.
No, so this is separate, so this is part of the, our zoning regulations, not our, uh, zoning resolution.
Gotcha.
So this is, um, part of a separate document that I'm, this isn't part of what's going to be formally adopted in April. This is something that I'm going to start on once I finish the other stuff.
Okay.
So this is a, and I'm, uh, a new section to our subdivision regulations.
Okay.
So that's why I was going to try and get this one adopted sooner, because it's part of a different, um, overall document.
Okay, so, so I think, I think that, uh, and, and consult with, consult with the county attorney or attorneys, as the case may be now. But, but consult with them and see what, see if we need a formal adoption by the board.
Okay.
And, and, and I mean, you know, that's their, that's, that's where we're headed. I don't see that we've got any, any, anyone that has concerns up here right now. And, um, but, but we need to, we need to follow the process to make sure that whatever we do is legal.
I'm absolutely with you. So then I guess, um, since I need to consult the county attorney and I have some research to do on those two topics, then it would be tabled for, till the next meeting, or am I incorrect?
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
It's my understanding that what, what this is, what you're asking us to do with this is to modify the existing regulations as they are today, not the ones in the future that you're going to be modifying.
Yes, yes, so this is, um, what this would be is adding a new section to the subdivision regulations, nothing to do with the Fremont County zoning.
Correct, so if we approve this today, when the, when the, when the, when the regulations get updated after April or in that timeframe. or in that timeframe, then if there are any issues that come up between now and then, they could be addressed at that point, correct?
So, yes, when I finish presenting and formally, getting everything formally adopted for the Fremont County zoning resolution, then I can start on our subdivision regulations, which will be getting updated in their entirety as well. So, so this will come back in front of you another time.
So we could take another look at this in six months or whatever.
This will absolutely be back in front of you again.
And that would give you time to, to kind of figure out what's not working and what needs to be done.
We would definitely know if there's errors by that time, yes.
Correct.
If we, if we adopted, if someone made a motion and we voted to adopt the regulation, the, the, one of the issues we've got is that we've, we've suggested some changes. I think there's suggested changes that you, that you need to incorporate. And so we can't really, we can't really adopt something that's, that's gonna be changed, unless we have the exact language.
Yes, sir.
So, so the, when, when, so if we adopted these, it would go before the Board of County Commissioners for final action. And once they, once they acted, then usually 30 days afterwards, or unless there's some other date chosen for effective date, the, the regulations would go into effect. But, so the, the, the point is, is that, is that this is gonna take a little while to do it likely, because you're gonna have to get it in front of the commissioners too, right?
Yeah, so the, the way we're looking at this is, say, say there was no revisions and everything was comfortable today. Next Tuesday, we would have had this scheduled for a public hearing. We would select the public hearing date, allow for the, um, public hearing to be posted, have the appropriate amount of time go for that, and then it would go in front of the county commissioners. I believe in the past, there was suggestions you guys had when we were working on the zoning resolution, where I had, uh, as part of my staff report, I had updated it and let them know what the Planning Commission's concerns were for their consideration.
Sure.
But if, uh, if you want me to put some, uh, some time into looking into the, the language with the appropriate agency for being notified, and then modifying that definition, then that's absolutely something we can do and revisit this in November.
Sure, I, I think there may be an additional consideration too, Dan, and that is that, that if, if these regulations require a public hearing to be adopted, it probably has to be two public hearings, one in front of the Planning Commission and one in front of the commissioners.
And with, and I'm, I'm just using the other, uh, updates I've been doing as a, as a guide. So what I've been doing is, everything gets presented to the Planning Commission, and then we schedule for the public hearing, have the public hearing, then we would close the public hearing. It would then go on as old business at the next BOCC meeting, at which time, um, there's been time for review, comments, feedback, and then that's when the BOCC would make a decision.
Gotcha.
So that's how the, the zoning resolution changes have been operating.
See, I'm the, I was on the city planning commission, and I, I know that they held public hearings and, and that, um, we haven't really ever had a public hearing, have we? So it could be a different process.
Yeah, typically, everything after you guys make a recommendation, that's when we schedule for public hearings, and, and that's always been the procedure and the protocols and, and the standard, based off of my regulations of how it's to be done.
So, so I think, I think today we could take a vote, have a motion, take a vote to recommend these regulations be, as modified and presented to the commissioners for a public hearing. And then that does, uh, complete the process. There's a public process, public hearing, and formal process for, prior to adoption of the, of the regulations.
And, and then that way I could present your recommendations and the, the changes to the county commissioners for, for their approval to, if, if that's what you guys choose to do.
Okay. Any other comment or discussion by commissioners?
Yeah, one thing I'd like, looking at from a resident's point of view, um, no, no, how many number, how many people do you think are gonna be affected by this? A lot?
Well, it depends on time, I guess.
That are already in a, living and what they think is their address?
Uh, we, we run into that, um, we run into that almost weekly, where somebody, through trying to do a permit or trying to do something, somebody has a discrepancy now.
I mean, I was talking about when the, when this thing kicks in, is there gonna be-
When this thing kicks in, um, code has a list of roadways that need to be addressed, that are unnamed.
Well, the point I'm trying to make is, I think it would be county-friendly
Yep.
to maybe print up a little guideline for those people.
Okay.
What this is really going to affect.
Okay.
And things they might wanna check out. I mean, there's things they're probably not even gonna think about. I mean, voter registration is gonna change insurance, it's gonna change everything. Deeds, filings, they're gonna have to go back to, and if they had a checklist and a little helpful insight for everybody can think about what they need to go back and look at, I think just dropping this on them cold.
Yep, and, and so, one thing it may be important to say is, is this isn't, um, we're not going through and doing a full audit of the entire county and instituting all of this change immediately. This just gives us an ability to, when we bump into that unnamed roadway subdivision that's unsafe, to be able to start trying to fix it.
Right.
So while there is a little bit of a push at the beginning for the, for the worst parts that are completely unnamed and, and kind of dangerous, it's not that code enforcement is gonna sit there and just be reviewing and auditing everyone and, and looking to change everything overnight. It just, this document basically will give us the ability to start addressing the major concerns.
I was just looking for a little softer hand to say, we know this is gonna be a disruption, but we've already prepared, we're willing, you know, ready to help you out, make sure you've got all this covered.
And, and that kind of goes back to like how we handle the 115 project, where we sent out mailings ahead of time to alert them that we've noticed errors and, and that there is a change coming. At that time, we did take the holidays into consideration to not try to be impactful during a stressful time of year. So we, we, on the larger, on the larger ones where it's affecting more homes, rather than like, say, a single thing being out of, out of line, we, we have in the past, and we fully intend to, to alert people and give them a heads up that there's, there will be a change coming, and, and these are some of the steps. So that, that is something we've done in the past, and we would absolutely continue moving forward with that.
Okay. Any other concerns? So I, I think the motion should be to, um, present the Board of County Commissioners with the new section 24, um, with potential amendments for, for their consideration.
Yep.
Now, do we have to wait until we're talking about the attorneys and so on and so forth?
I, I think that, I think that we can make the motion, and if this, if we're outside the lines here, if, you know, if we're outside the lines, we can, it can be brought back to us and we can fix it at a, at a future meeting. But in the interest of moving things along, we can, we can try this and see if this works, and if it doesn't, we'll redo it.
You, you guys will be the first to know if they're, if I hear of concerns.
I'm sure we will. I'm sure.
And I apologize for this, is presenting new regulations and new sections, I mean, this is, this is still fairly new to me. This is, there's a big learning curve here, so I, I wish I could advise you better. But, um, yeah, well, I'll let you know if, if I hear there's a hiccup with it.
Was that a motion, John?
So, was that a motion?
The, I will make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
I was gonna suggest that.
Now we have a motion, I'm gonna second.
Yeah, Rudolph second.
By Rudolph, any, any further discussion?
No.
Uh, Rudolph, you wanna start us?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, I'm.
I don't believe we have any other business in front of us. And so we're adjourned.
Thank you, gentlemen.